So we'll start off today's meeting with a few presentations. Our first is a legislative update from the Honorable Jeremy Moss and the Honorable Kyra Harris Bolden, our state rep and our state senator.
That's pretty good to get an applause for not doing anything.
Oh, you're doing a lot.
Wow, thanks.
Just showing up.
Just showing up. Have a good night. No, it's really actually council, mayor, administration, it is a pleasure for us to join you to give a little bit of an update on what's been going on in Lansing and how it's impacted us back home, especially in the start of this new term. Obviously, the dynamics have shifted during the first two terms that I served in the House. We've restored a balance to a degree in state government, having the governor and the secretary of state and the attorney general from one party and the legislative majority from another party. I think we're talking again, we're discussing, we're debating, you know, things are, you know, one party doesn't control the agenda, and I think that's a benefit for the citizens of the state of Michigan. So I just took office on the first of this year as the new state senator for our district, which includes here in Southfield, additionally Lathrop Village, and then on the west side, Farmington and Farmington Hills, on the east side, Oak Park, Royal Oak Township, Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, Hazel Park, and Madison Heights. So you, so, so I'm still, still a Southfield kid, grew up here, still live here, of course, but now Southfield has to share me with a whole, whole wide district in Southern Oakland County. But the exciting news is at the start of this term, not only I was selected as the Assistant Leader of the Democratic Caucus, but Representative Bolden also is the Assistant Leader of the Democratic Caucus in the House. So you have two, two leaders in the legislature fighting for Southfield values every single day. I just wanted to touch base on two of the bill packages that I've been working on just in the first start of this legislative term, and I know Representative Bolden wants to talk about some of the work that she's been doing. First and foremost, obviously, the issue that we dealt with here in Southfield regarding oil drilling was still never touched legislatively. At the time, as you might recall, the city passed, which I believe and you believe was a lawful moratorium on, on drilling in the city of Southfield, and then worked an ordinance to make sure that drilling was restricted only to industrially zoned areas of the city. And the DEQ at the time, of course, overruled local ordinances, our input from the local community to issue the oil drilling permit in 2016 on the corner of Nine Mile and Evergreen. You know, and we have, I have found legislative partners across the aisle to remedy the situation that Southfield unfortunately had to go through. And so we've reintroduced our legislation to restrict oil drilling in our most populated communities. So we, we took parameters of if it's a, if it's a county with 750,000 people or more, so Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb, you have to follow three rules from the State Department before issuing an oil drilling permit. Rule number one is it has to be no, no less than, or there's a 2,000-foot limit. If there's a residential dwelling within 2,000 feet of the point of drilling, you cannot issue an oil drilling permit. The second one is, is that the DEQ is compelled, under our proposed bill, to follow all applicable local ordinances in, in, when issuing a permit. You know, at the time, we're not a community under state control or state management, and Southfield passed a lawful ordinance to deal with this situation happening in our community, and the state wiped away that local control. And you know, as a former councilman, I am strong support of keeping local control intact in all instances, but especially when this council and this mayor worked to protect the public safety and public health and environment of our community by restricting oil drilling in, in the city. And then number three, holding a public hearing in the community in which the, the permit is up for discussion. You know, at the time, they had no reason or no, no compelling need to hold a public hearing until we really demanded it from my office, with the help of mayor and council at the time, for them to come to Southfield, take the temperature here on the ground, hear from our residents about why we don't want this permit issued in our community, and then nonetheless still issued the permit. So we've reintroduced this legislation. It's been referred to the Senate Committee on Natural Resources. It's so great to have a partner in the House and Representative Bolden in helping move that process through the House as well. And so we're, 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 we're a lesson for the rest of the state, that if you can draw, drill for oil at the corner of Nine Mile and Evergreen, you can drill for oil anywhere, and that's problematic to the residents that we want to make sure we're protecting here. So that was a Southfield-driven issue that we're still trying to push state legislation on, and it's, it's, it's been a boost to hear from residents still on this topic and to have such support from the council on moving that issue forward. The other big bill package that I'm working on is, which I've been talking about for a very long time, is increasing government ethics, accountability, and transparency. Everybody here knows that the city council, the mayor, are subjected to the Freedom of Information Act, which is where our citizens can best understand what goes on inside City Hall and the decisions that are made that impact the community at large. But when the act was written 40 years ago, the governor and the state legislature were, were excluded from the act. And so you cannot get anything out of our offices, there's no framework, there's no infrastructure, there's no setup to request that information and deliver it back to the resident. And also, there's no, there's, the governor is not subjected to the Freedom of Information Act. Where that was clearly problematic was during the Flint Water Crisis, where residents needed to know, and reporters digging around tried to know what started this crisis, who knew about it, how long did they know about it, and what was being done to resolve it. And, and we didn't have access to that information. So at the time, in the House, I drafted a series of 10 bills that would subject the governor and state legislature to the parameters of our open records law. It passed the House at the end of my first term, but ran out of time before it got to the Senate. So it was the first major bipartisan bill package presented in my second term in the House, where all 10 bills passed unanimously, and for a year and a half, it sat stalled in the state senate. So that's kind of one of the reasons why I was so urgently pushing to get to the state senate, to usher that process there. So Representative Bolden is about to take a vote tomorrow on our 10 bills in the House, which we, I testified in support of and have been working to make right just last week. And, and we've built a strong coalition, the governor is in support of these bills, and Representative Bolden will take a vote on it tomorrow, and then at long last, it will come to the senate where we're going to try and usher it through to fruition. So those are the two things that I've been working on just in this short start of the session, in addition to many other things that I wanted to present to the council. And I will yield now to our representative.
Please.
You know, these people know I'm.
I already gave them my tab before you start.
The clock is in countdown, so.
I am State Representative Kyra Bolden. I am happy to appear before council, mayor tonight to give you a little update on what I have been doing since January 1st of 2019. So as many of you know, this is my first term as state representative. Fortunately, I was chosen to be Assistant Democratic Leader in the House, and I'm very excited about that because now you have two Assistant Democratic Leaders leading the, the state from Southfield. So, well, thank you. So I will let you know what committees I'm on because that might be helpful if you have any questions about what I'm doing specifically. I'm on Judiciary, which handles a lot of our criminal justice matters. I am on Insurance. I'm on the Select Committee to Reduce No-Fault Insurance Premium Rates, which was created by the Speaker of the House to reduce no-fault insurance premium rates. And I am the Democratic Vice Chair of a committee called Administrative Rules. So those are my committees, I serve on four. My prime attention will be to reform in our criminal justice system, as well as lowering our no-fault insurance premium rates, which are two heavy lifts, and I'm happy to be involved in the conversation from the standpoint of Southfield. One of the bill packages that I was on, a bipartisan bill packages, passed the House on Tuesday, so we actually have some, some legislation moving, so I, I am working, and I'm really excited to see what we can get done in this first term, and looking forward to working with each and every one of you to move the great community, this great community forward. And I'm super excited to work with my partner in the senate, Senator Moss. We work together, I think this is our fourth time today. Yes, yes, so we are together a lot, we're in constant communication, and I think that only benefits this great community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you guys taking the time to come and speak with us. It's, of course, very important that we have constant communication with our state leaders, and while isn't Southfield lucky to have such dynamic leaders in, in the, in the House and in the senate, so we're very proud of both of what you guys are doing up there. Council, do we have any questions or comments for?
I have one question.
Yeah, Mr. Fraser.
For our representative. You're on the Judiciary Committee?
I am.
Have you in the committee discussed "Ban the Box"?
We have not yet, but that legislation has been introduced, so that should be working its way to our committee soon.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you all again for coming this evening.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, second presentation is on My Brother's Keeper. We'll be leading that one.
Joanne.
Oh, there she is. Hey, Joanne.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Joanne Gurley, and I'm from the Southfield Cable Department here at the city of Southfield, and I'm also the chair of My Brother's Keeper Southfield Chapter. I'd like to thank you for allowing My Brother's Keeper to make its presentation tonight. But before I begin, I'd like to ask that the members of My Brother's Keeper Southfield please stand up so I can acknowledge to them.
All right.
We are a small but mighty group, so they do a lot of work, and without them, it would not be a successful program. Our presentation tonight will begin with me just giving a little background information on My Brother's Keeper, and then Rhonda Terry will talk about the tenants of My Brother's Keeper, there are six milestones that we follow. And then Sergeant Aaron Hugley will talk about our latest program, which is called Meal with a Message. And then Jay Reed will talk about the impact that he's observed from Meal with a Message since it started. So My Brother's Keeper in Southfield is one of 250 chapters across the country. It began in 2014 when former President Barack Obama felt the need to create it after African-American teen Trayvon Martin was shot and killed in his neighborhood. And from that tragic event, President Obama thought that there's something that needs to be done, and so from that started My Brother's Keeper. So part of our mission is to make sure that boys and young men of color lead successful lives. And it first started with President Obama issuing a challenge to cities across the country to initiate My Brother's Keeper chapter. And so the former president thought that this would be a good way for people to understand and to build community. Former Southfield Mayor Brenda Lawrence, she accepted the challenge along with Darryl Buchanan, who was the former state director of My Brother's Keeper, and Mayor Seiver continues this endeavor to this day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gass.
Can they get the speaker a little louder? We can hardly, is it the speaker or the?
Let's see, let's see what Mr. Terry.
Can you hear me?
One or the other.
Why don't you get started? If you can hear us down there, turn it, turn it up a little bit.
Okay, my name is Rhonda Terry, I'm the outreach case worker for the Human Services Department and a volunteer with the My Brother's Keeper Southfield Chapter. My Brother's Keeper, the Southfield Chapter, we focus on four milestones. The first one is graduating from high school ready for college and career. All young men should receive a quality high school education and graduate with the skills and tools necessary to advance to post-secondary education or training. The second milestone is completing post-secondary education or training. Every young man should have the option to attend post-secondary education and receive the education and training needed for the quality jobs of today and tomorrow. The third milestone is successfully entering the workforce. Every young man who wants a job should be able to get a job that allows them to support themselves and their families. The fourth milestone is keeping kids on track and giving them second chances. All young men should be safe from violent crime, and individuals who are confined should receive the education, training, and treatment they need for a second chance. My Brother's Keeper Southfield Chapter, we've had 12 programs that we have sponsored, starting with the first one in February 24th, 2017. We had a youth symposium, and we partnered with Project Manhood. We had over 500 young men in attendance, and we had guest speakers talking to young men about different concerns that they were being, that they were experiencing, and the speakers were giving them ways to handle those concerns. We also had a tie with a message where the community donated over 1,000 ties to our young men, and we had a job fair in April, and those young men wore those ties. There were 25 employers in attendance, and over 50 of the young men secured summer employment. We also had a back-to-school rally where we had barbers and dentists donate their services, and young men received free haircuts and free dental services. And now our current, we've just started now a Meal with a Message series, and our first Meal with a Message was dealing with loss, the second one was goal-setting, the third was love and relationships, and the fourth was, which is coming up this Saturday, about what you do after high school. Some of our future events will be a career and job fair again, financial literacy workshop, Community Service Day, Job Shadowing Day, and we're going to have a coding workshop. And now Sergeant Hugley will continue talking about our Meals with a Message. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sergeant Hugley, Sergeant Aaron Hugley with the Southfield Police Department. My segment is to speak about what is Meal with a Message. So as you see here on the monitors, these are different photographs from different events with Meal with a Message. So again, our inaugural program for Meals with a Message was in December of 2018, as Ms. Terry spoke about, it dealt with dealing with a loss, the tops, the topic of discussion was dealing with a loss. Loss of a loved one, loss of a family member to incarceration, loss of a pet, loss of a home due to a fire or some other catastrophic event. Followed up in the month of February, we dealt with goal-setting. We wanted the young man to begin a game plan for what they're going to do, set a goal and work toward it, take the necessary steps to navigate toward that goal. The following month being in February, we dealt with healthy relationships, how to interact with your parents, how to interact with your peers, how to interact with authority figures, how to interact with your teachers, giving them different tools and equipment to, to manage those relationships. So this month being the month of March, we have, our, our topic of discussion is get your head in the game. Simply a play on words to get young people focused and moving forward in the direction of what you're going to do once high school is over. Once that final bell rings, what's the next step for you? Are you going to get into skilled trades? Are you going to college, two-year, four-year university? Are you prepared for SAT, ACT? Are you looking for scholarships? Are you working on financial aid? We want to help with that. So again, that's what we have coming up here, this upcoming Saturday, March 23rd, it's from 11:00 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. over at the Beach Woods Recreation Center here in the city of Southfield. Address is 22200 Beach Road, again, 22200 Beach Road here in the city of Southfield. Our contact person is Ms. Joanne Gurley, which is the chair of the Southfield MBK Chapter. You can reach out to her for RSVPing at 248-796-4503, again, 248-796-4503. We're asking no later than Thursday or Friday, Friday being the latest, the 21st or the 22nd of March for the RSVP. We're going to have a guest speaker in the House this month, is going to be Resno Hammond from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. He's going to give, he's going to speak to the young man to give them the tools, how to prepare for applications, how to complete the applications, how to fill out the FAS, how to look for different scholarships and things of that nature. It's not only going to be specific to the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, he's going to give them and provide them with the general tools necessary to, to make that next step. So again, it's not just a message that we're having, it's a meal with a message. So in times past, we've had food items such as tacos, chicken swarmers, beef swarmers, pancakes and chicken. This upcoming event, we're going to have hot dogs and chips and some cookies, possibly some chili on the hot dogs. We started out kind of slow, but still effective. Our first event, again, back in December of 2018, dealing with a lot, with loss, we only have five participants, but it was really an impactful session that we had, and it just did nothing but grow from there. We're consistently at 20-plus, hovering around 25 students for this event here. Coming next Saturday on 23rd, we have 17 young men scheduled, and we're still taking phone calls, and we're hoping this, this, this platform here will create a little bit more buzz about it. So in closing here, we, as we close out with our young men each and every month, we ask them a question, we pose them a question. We ask them, what are you going to do to keep your brother into the next meeting? And we get a host of answers, a host of different responses from, I'm going to follow my brother, make sure he's being respectful to his mom or his dad. I'm going to follow my brother, make sure he's doing good with his academics. I'm going to follow my brother, make sure he's being respectful with his teachers and things of that nature. So for those that are watching, as I understand this is live by web TV and also the radio, we ask, what are you going to do to keep your brother? And we're hoping that as we continue these different events and programs, that you'll come and provide us with an answer.
So another goal of ours for My Brother's Keeper, MBK, is to allow the young men or young adults to recognize that there's so much to learn, there's so much out there that they can continuously learn, and so many things outside of school that you aren't necessarily taught. So in order for them to grow successfully, we allow this outlet for them to ask us personal questions and to answer personal questions in order for them to understand what our mistakes, our downfalls were, so that they don't make those same things. That's how each generation continues to grow. So from them learning from those mistakes and understanding each individual perspective and from multiple generations, we're teaching them what we've learned, we've, we're teaching them our mistakes, we're teaching them how to continue to grow and what's, what's next in their future. So in a personal way, a lot of these students grew up without a father, grew up without a mother, grew up with low income or no family. I relate to that because my mother passed when I was two. I didn't grow up with a father, but my grandparents raised me. And from our first event, like he said, dealing with loss, there's, there's more than death when it comes to loss. And when you focus on that, when kids hear many perspectives from that, they begin to understand it's okay. It's, it's another sense of, it's another sense of growth. And so with this event, we allow them this outlet to talk to us, to talk to each other, and learn from each other, to keep one another, and to show that there doesn't have to be violence, but there's always love. So on the boards here, this is kind of what our agenda consists of, and it changes all the time because we want the kids to do an icebreaker, eat, hear a speaker, have a group discussion, a Q and A, because hearing their impact is the most important thing for us. In February, a couple feedback cards that we received, and these are quoted from the kids. It opened up a new path from a 12-year-old. A 15-year-old said, "Love, love the change, to actually, love the chance to actually respond." A lot of kids don't get that chance to tell the truth, tell what they've been through. Here, we allow that outlet. 16-year-olds said, "I want to change myself before the next event." Another person said, "Coming together and talking really, really motivates him." A 15-year-old says that, "I love the advice and the conversations that we had, that we had, and I want to work on my mindset." And all of the activities that we provide really boost their morale when they go back to school, when they're dealing with friends. So the next event, we encourage you to invite your kids, we encourage you to invite, if you have a neighbor, if they have a son, or if you yourself want to be involved with MBK, we recommend that you contact us, that you be a part of this, and that you can continue to keep your brother, keep your sister. We have flyers outside in the foyer so that parents or anyone interested can grab, and that is our presentation.
So thank you to all the committee members for sharing what My Brother's Keeper is. I'd also like to thank city administration, the mayor's office, Parks and Rec Director Terry Fields, and her entire staff. They always assist us with whatever we need. Of course, the cable department, Paula Johnson of Southfield Youth Assistance, Judge Deborah Nance, the city of Southfield's Facilities Department are awesome, Linda Neighbors from the Field Zone, Community Relations, Southfield Public Schools, and Project Manhood. So what I would like to leave you with is what these boys are not who participate in this program. They are not behavioral problems, they are not delinquents, they are not problems. They are very curious, they are intelligent, and they're simply just looking for mentors to help them pave that next road so they can live their best lives. And so it's been an honor to be a part of My Brother's Keeper, and I hope that as we continue on, it will be more successful, and we appreciate all the support that we've received. We meet the first Thursday of every month in the Parks and Rec Department at 6:00 p.m., so if anybody would like to attend, please, we welcome you. So thank you very much.
Mr. Cruz, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I really appreciate the efforts that all of you have put into this, and I've been a supporter, but I was, I really didn't, I think the new approach that you're using this year is excellent. I really think that the big symposium, while it was, they were good events, not taking anything away from it, this, you're dealing in a more intimate, more personal level, and I think that that is something that will make more of a lasting impression on these young men than the big group symposium and the distractions of a large room. This is much more intense and focused, so I congratulate you on reformatting the program and then keeping it current every month with something that's germane to teens growing up. So, good job.
I appreciate your, your closing comment about the type of young men that you're working with. A lot of times, we spend a lot of time and effort on working with the high, high achieving students and the ones that are maybe a lot more deficient, but it's the ones in the middle, that's the majority of, of our young men that, you know, could really use the extra guidance. And like you said, they're curious, they want to know about things, and they just need a little push to get them to that next level. So this program is wonderful, I'm glad that you all, all of you, I'm going to have to say, and I'm talking about myself here too, I hate to see so many women working in this program and not enough men, so I'm going to have to get on my game. All right, so you have my support, of course, but we've got to get more of us out there, like, and as Jay said, for those in the community that may be watching now, please get, please get involved, it's a very important project.
I just wanted to say too, I thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate the passion that you've shown here and the commitment that you have shown in working with our young men. All of you spoke so well, and you can see that you really care about the young men. I too have a son, and I wanted to ask, what is the age range?
Sixth grade to 12th grade.
Sixth grade to 12th grade, okay. Now, didn't you guys go meet President Obama? I thought I saw a picture, and I didn't see the picture.
Jay, Jay did.
Jay, was that a part of MBK or?
That was a, that was a summit that individuals from across the country were able to meet, not meet the president, but be a part of a whole for My Brother's Keeper, and just so that they can get.
they can get awareness about what's going on in the black community, what's going on in their community, so that we can bring information back. So, the individuals who did go, they had a great experience, and I can say that for people across the nation, so thank you.
Jay, when you're marketing MBK, put that picture in there.[622.32][622.32](laughter) It's awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you again, we appreciate all your work. Moving on to the next item, presentation of joint resolution for Black Maternal Health Week. I'm gonna pass this to Councilman Brightwell, as this was his issue he brought forward to us.
I was approached earlier last month by a movement organizer for mothering justice, and I sat with her, and we talked, I visited their office, and I invited the director, Ms. Nkengue Burkhead.
You got it?
I got it, okay. To give a presentation on mothering justice. I've been a fan of little people all my life, and obviously I had a grandchild, and it reacquainted me with the joy of having little people around, and the need for those little people to have mothers and to have justice around them as they grow up. So, I would like for Mrs. Burkhead to give a presentation and tell us about mothering justice, and at the end of that, we have a resolution that we will be presenting to you. And it's my understanding that there are individuals in Washington that also will be sponsoring Black Maternal Health Week. So, I'm not gonna take up any more of your time, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brightwell, for inviting us, and to Mayor Siver, and Cyver, sorry. I rehearsed it in my head like fifty times, and I still, sorry. And to President Cruz and all other council members, we thank you so much for extending time to us to speak about mothering justice. My name is Ebony Taylor, and I am the Deputy Director of Mothering Justice, and we are a nonprofit organization. We focus on public policy and advocacy around issues that impact mothers of color. And we look to our mama's agenda, it's basically our policy agenda, but we put mamas in front of everything, so it's our mama's agenda. And it's like our guiding light. It's been curated by our one-on-one conversations, it's been curated by our mama conversations. We speak to mothers in the community, we're a statewide organization, so we speak to mothers all over the state. But because we are in Ferndale, we mainly sort of focus, and a lot of our members are from the Detroit area. So, some of the things that are in our mama's agenda include affordable childcare, family medical leave, safety net issues, but there's two that sort of stand out here. One is our work around earned pay sick time, and we actually led the fight here in Michigan to get earned pay sick time passed. And unfortunately, it was hijacked in our lame duck session, but we are still working to see if that can get sort of reverted back to the original bill that we proposed. And so, through our earned pay sick time campaign, we actually, over the course of six months, knocked on forty-five hundred doors in Southfield. So, that's why we're here, because you're a partner in our work. And so, the other item in our mama's agenda that brings us here today is our women's health, our newly added women's health item to our mama's agenda, and that includes, I'm sorry, we actually changed it to maternal justice. So, and under maternal justice, we look at maternal incarceration and black women's maternal morbidity and mortality. And so, coming up next month, April 11th through the 17th, I'll let my colleague talk more about that. But, so, we're here to, as a partner, we see Southfield as a partner, we're here to talk about Maternal Health Week and sort of answer afterwards any other questions you might have about mothering justice and our work.
Hello, everyone, I'm Nkengue Burkhead. Like Ebony stated, we do a lot of work around getting mothers, moms of color involved and just involved in their community, and then we take what they tell us about their community, we take it up to Lansing, and we talk to policymakers and lawmakers, and we say, "This is what the community tells us is important, this is what mamas are telling us that they need." One of the things that kept sticking out, and we just could not ignore anymore, was that black mamas and black babies were dying at twice the rate of white mamas and white babies, and black babies were twice unlikely to make it to their first birthday. We feel like one of the ways to spread education is simply through awareness and acknowledgement. So, one of the things that we're picking up this year, this will be our first year participating in Black Maternal Health Week, we are doing three days of events, starting Thursday, April 11th. Thursday, April 11th, we're having a panel where you meet, it's called Meet Your Black Childbirth Educators, and that is just for moms to come out, ask questions, or community members. We put mom on everything, but we're open to aunties and uncles and fathers and all that too, just so y'all know. But, so it's to come out and meet your doula, ask questions. A lot of people avoid talking to midwives or doulas, they just don't know their options or don't think they can afford them, and we want to bring doulas and midwives and everyone, make them accessible to community members. So, you come out on Thursday and talk to, just to talk to your childbirth educators. Friday, we're having a screening of a movie, Death by Delivery, and that's around the epidemic of these moms and these babies dying, again, moms dying in childbirth, babies dying in childbirth or during the birth process or before, sometime before their first birthday. And Saturday, we're gonna have a libation pouring ceremony for the babies and the mamas who are no longer with us. We try to make sure that our events are culturally sensitive, bring awareness and education, and in case there's a question about this, we will have specifically black women therapists on site at the libation ceremony who are there to offer services on site for anyone who's triggered at the ceremony, but also to let those in attendance know about their services. And we specifically only reached out to black therapists who would offer sliding scale rates for mothers who have lost a baby, who would make themselves available, who would do things like travel to homes, travel to parks and things like that if the moms did not feel comfortable in therapeutic office settings and things like that. So, again, we try to make sure our services are culturally competent, and we take into consideration income, needs of the community, needs of the mamas, and things of that nature. So, I have the flyer for the Black Maternal Health Week, and we'll have, I'll be here. If you guys want more information from us, I have all of our cards, our mama's agenda and things like that, I have both Ebony and my own cards on me if you guys have questions. And we want to really, really thank the community here in Southfield for recognizing this week, for recognizing Black Maternal Health Week, because members of your community are affected, and you know, this is one of those things that every city has members that are affected, whether they're talking about it or not, and having this built-in support of recognizing this week annually really helps to broaden the education for everyone and make services more accessible to those who need them.
Ms. Burkhead?
Yes.
Excellent information, but you, I picked it up during our meeting, that you are funded by the Ford Foundation and other foundations?
This is the money lady.[1152.25][1152.25](laughter)
Yes, we're funded by, some of our larger funders are the Ford Foundation and Kresge.
Right, okay.
And just to sort of comment on something you said as you introduced us, we are in conversation with other cities in metro Detroit to sort of get a resolution passed around this week, and at the state level and also at the federal level.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation and for the work that you're doing. We do have a resolution for you.
Thank you.
That the mayor will present now. Are there any questions? Well, we can take questions after the resolution is introduced.
Let me read this resolution, and the council's asked to adopt it. It's a joint resolution from the mayor and council, and I'll be joined by Councilman Brightwell. Joint Resolution, Black Maternal Health Week, August, or rather, April 11th to 17th, 2019. Whereas, according to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, black mothers in the United States die at three to four times the rate of white mothers. And whereas, black women in the United States suffer from life-threatening pregnancy complications twice as often as white women, and whereas, the United States maternal mortality rates are the highest in the developed world and are increasing rapidly, and whereas, the United States has the highest maternal mortality rate among affluent countries because of the disproportionate death rate of black mothers. And whereas, the premature delivery rate among black women is forty-nine percent higher than the rate among all other women, a fact I did not know. And whereas, structural racism, gender oppression, social determinants of health inequities experienced by black women in the United States significantly contribute to the disproportionately high rates of maternal mortality and morbidity among black women. And whereas, an investment must be made in black women's maternity care and, excuse me, policies that support and promote affordable, comprehensive, and holistic maternal health care that is free from gender and racial discrimination. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and council, the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize April 11th through 17th as Black Maternal Health Week in the city of Southfield.[1324.58][1324.58](applause) I would entertain a vote from the council.
Mr. President? Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve the resolution on Black Maternal Health Week.
Support?
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the resolution, the joint resolution for recognizing Black Maternal Health Week. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It is approved.
I do have a question.
But, yes.
Congratulations.
Before you, we'll let you, let mom and dad get some pictures over there.[1376.52][1376.52](laughter)
Sure.
And we do, yeah, we do have some questions from a couple of members, I believe. Mr. Frazier first.
Yes, do you work directly with the mothers?
So, I work directly with, I'm the director of organizing, and basically, my job is to go out into the community and try to find every mom I can and get her involved, but yes, we work directly with the mothers.
And, so, the, who do you work with? Doctors or other organizations or?
So, we're involved in policymaking and like with our mama's agenda that Ebony spoke about, so we go out, what happened was, we were having conversations with moms, and we weren't initially starting the conversation off about maternal health. We were talking to moms about what they needed, and what kept coming up was, we kept meeting moms who had lost babies or had their pain ignored during childbirth and things like that, and so we started to study the numbers, and we realized what was happening in the community.
Okay, the reason I ask that question, a number of years ago, I was part of the Oakland County Fetal and Infant Mortality Study Group, and even back then, it was recognized that African-American women were, the death rate, the mortality rate, and premature births were higher than some third-world countries.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons that they found out was, well, there are a couple of reasons. One was the family traditions. Grandma said, you know, "When I was raising my kids, I did this and I did that, this is good, and all our kids were healthy," and they really weren't following the, what the scientific and the doctor, the medical field said was the way to raise healthy children, or the diet that mothers ate during their pregnancy and things like that. But I applaud you for doing what you're doing because it's really well-needed in this area, so.
Can I speak to what you, sorry? I just wanted to say, there have been more studies done since, and some of those things have been debunked as far as the diet and traditions being a contributor to the death. And it was studied amongst other communities of color, like Latino communities, for instance, and what we recognize is what really is one of the leading causes or contributors, is that people don't listen to black women, and when black women are in labor, their pain is not taken seriously, or we're assumed to be physically stronger and able to sustain more pain, so we're not given the correct medicine, we don't have the education to know, or we're not trusted when we say something is wrong with our body or something doesn't feel right, and that an emergency cesarean may be the answer. So, we, I wanna say we're kind of, the studies are now showing that this is like a specific targeted race issue for black moms, and it's not so much our diets, our diets are comparable to other communities, Caribbean communities, Latina communities, and the diet wasn't contributing. The traditions weren't the biggest factor, what we're learning through research and just the way the numbers are higher and higher in our community and lower in communities with similar socioeconomic issues and everything like that, what it comes down to is that black women are being ignored in childbirth.
Yeah, that was one of the things that came, that doctors tend not to give as much pain medication to black women as they do to white women for the same kind of pains and stuff, but that's committee work.
Yeah, go ahead.
When I met with them in February, it came to my intention that one of your goals is to, and it might be already, but already I'm being done, to work with the hospitals, to get, well, the teaching schools, where you get in with the, I think Beaumont is offering them some classes with the new medical school doctors, the ones who are learning. So, I think that's a long-term goal, or it's being?
Yeah, it's, I would even say short-term. We've had conversations recently with the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, they came to our office maybe a few weeks ago to talk about how we can help them think through their curriculum as they bring in new residents, new, you know, students. And so, we're, you know, working with them soon, very soon actually, to help them think through some cultural competency and to not see a black woman and have, you know, whatever their certain biases are so that they can appropriately treat them. So, we are looking forward to having conversations with Beaumont as well, and we just, you know, thank Councilman Brightwell for, you know, hopefully doing an introduction to that end.
And we thank you all for coming again this evening, too.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any other questions?[1743.62][1743.62](applause)
Okay, thank you, thank you.[1746.41][1746.41](applause)
I'm glad I got you.
All right, we have one more joint resolution, recognizing International World Water Day.
Would you ask for Berta Cotman to come over?
Council will recall that Ms. Cotman has a long association with the United Nations, and so we have a joint resolution, and I know Ms. Cotman has a few words that she'd like to share. So, the joint resolution reads, "World Water Day in the city of Southfield, which is March 22nd, 2019. And whereas, International World Water Day is held annually on March 22nd as a means of focusing attention on the importance..." of focusing attention on the importance of freshwater and advocating for sustainable management of freshwater resources. And whereas, recommended at the 1992, long before Flint, United Nations Conference on Environmental and Development, the U N C E D, the World United Nations General Assembly, responded by designating March 22nd, 1993 as the first World Water Day. And whereas, formalized in 2003, U N Water is the United Nations inter-agency coordination mechanism for all freshwater-related matters, including sanitation, to meet the complex challenges of climate change, ecosystems, disasters, urbanization, and the effects of sustainable management of water. And whereas, one of the U N Water's key objectives is to provide coherent and reliable data on the, and information on key water trends and management issues. And whereas, every year, U N Water coordinates the United Nations observances of freshwater and sanitation. This year's theme, Leaving No One Behind, adapts the promise of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development Goal Number Six, Crystal Clear Water for All by 2030. And whereas, World Water Day is about taking action to tackle water issues, today, 1.8 billion people are living without safe water. Many households, schools, workplaces, and factories struggle with drinking water that is contaminated, putting them at risk for serious health issues. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize March 22nd, 2019 as World Water Day in the city of Southfield, and urge all residents to participate in programs and activities that advocate the importance of freshwater resources and sustainable management thereof."
Entertain a motion.
I also want to move, Mr. Chairman.
Support. They move, my Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the resolution, the joint resolution recognizing International World Water Day. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Thank you, and I'll get the floor.
Ms. Cottman, have a few words for us?
Water, access to water is a human right. It is a mandated right. I come to you tonight and thank you for the resolution. This is a visionary gesture in the recognition of World Day of Water. And what began in 1993 at the United Nations that declared March 22nd, World Day for Water. And now you know that the changes in our environment, the changes in our air mandate now that we look to our planet Earth, preserve our planet Earth, and particularly with our waters. It is a crisis in Michigan. It is a grave crisis in Washington, DC. It is now a public health issue that affects more than our women and children, but our women particularly in the maternal stages that you just heard about. Governor Gretchen Whitmer, in her State of Address on February 12th, her third statement in that address, "We must regard our water, make water safe for our communities." She, in her budget, appealed for thirteen point nine million dollars to enhance monitoring of, responsive to, the human impact of public health threats estimated by drinking water. And so I come to you because in 2016, a resolution to declare March 22, 2016, as United Nations Water Day in the state of Michigan. This was presented by Jeremy Moss in 2016. That was visionary. And now here we are in 2019 with these huge water crises. And so I remind you that the body can live without food, but the body, the frail human body cannot live without clean air, and most of all, can't live without clean water. Thank you.
And thank you very much. All set? All right. Very good. Moving forward, we got three sets of meeting minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move our approval of our regular meeting minutes of February 25th, our committee of a whole meeting of March 1st, and our committee of a whole meeting on March 4th.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 25th, committee of the whole meeting minutes of March 1st, as well as the committee of the whole meeting minutes for March 4th. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. I'll accept, well, if we're at the consent agenda, we did choose to pull item K.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through J.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Moore, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve consent agenda items A through J. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. All right, we'll move on to communications. Our first request for recognition is Sonia Simpson-Gartner. Again, I just want to remind folks as we go through communications today that, you know, the point of this is for all of our residents to have an opportunity to speak directly to us primarily about the work that we are doing. It's not about an opportunity to lodge personal attacks against individuals. So we just want to always keep that in mind as people come before the lectern. When you come up, please, you have three minutes to speak. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sonia Simpson-Gartner. Thank you, Council President. I guess I just want to start off by saying I never say anything bad or negative about anyone.
Was directed at you at all.
Oh, I know. I'm just letting you guys know I try my hardest to be as respectful as I possibly can, but I just told you that I will continue to come again, and nothing has changed. I am still actively looking for employment and trying my hardest to represent my daughter on the best of my ability as well as on my behalf. I heard about my brother's keeper. It sounds like there are some wonderful programs. Well, I do have a daughter who is 15 years old, who is doing the best that she can do at girls. She goes to school every day, like I said, with me working as hard as I can, with me still having issues. My question is, why do we not have better representation if you're having issues with the police department? I've had the opportunity to go to the city of Detroit and visit their police commissioners' boards, and what they have is wonderful. If you're having any issues with any of the police departments or any police officers, you have an opportunity to stand before the board and bring or address your issue publicly. Why do we not have anything here? I understand Southfield is a smaller city and it's not the city of Detroit, but I do feel like I'm constantly coming and no one is doing anything, no one is seeing anything about the fact that I'm coming, letting you guys know that I'm having an issue with the police department. We all have social media, we can all see with social media that different people in different areas have problems with the police department, and I'm coming before you guys and I'm still letting you know that we have issues. The last time I was here, Ms. Pamela Gerald stood up and said that she's had this wonderful relationship with the police department, and I'm glad that she has. I've talked to other people that have had a good relationship with the police department as well. And again, I didn't say it was everybody in the police department, I just said that there were some people in the police department, and I would appreciate someone helping or someone listening. I guess I would just like to also add that I am a taxpayer, and I guess I, I'm not going to say that I have a problem, but I think that it's just a little unfair that we have people coming in and making presentations, and they get all of the time in the world, and I'm a taxpayer who voted you guys in, and I have to come before you and feel rushed saying what I'm saying, and I get three minutes when they can come in and present something to you guys and they get all the time in the world. So I don't think that that's fair, and I just wanted to address that. But again, I will continue to come and visit you guys as much as I possibly have to until something is done, and if nothing is done, then I will join you guys. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Pamela Gerald. Not seeing, next would be Mr. Gerald Mullin. Not seeing him either. Then we'll go to Ms. Stacy Jackson.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. Just wanted to come back before you to present my concerns about the septic tank issue. The last time I stood at this podium in this very room, I watched as eighteen gas station owners stood before you to plead their case to keep a storage unit to store their ice. I watched as one of our beloved and longtime city council people supported their initiative. Our mayor also supported it and sent out a recommendation to have it sent back to planning for a more successful resolve. My concern is that no one on council said, hey, this is an ordinance. You have to move the box. You can do a new engineered system in your gas station, to put it, or better yet, you've got two and a half freezers where you keep frozen goods? Let's remove one and a half of those and put ice in there. Instead, they reached out for a resolve. We've heard nothing publicly about the septic tank issue. It's as if all of you forgotten that not less than four months ago, over sixty residents came to you before you, twenty of which were association presidents, the elected voices of these communities, asking, pleading for a resolve. Nothing has been said to us publicly from this room, nothing. I've had one, possibly two, city council people give me a call saying, we're with you and keep it up, but nothing publicly moved by this body to do anything. I also watched at that very same meeting where our council president wanted to clear up the air with the media about the plastic brothel, indicating that he wanted to give them, or this council wanted to do due process. We have an ordinance that's been in effect for 23 years that this city neglected and failed to enforce. Since 1997, 1998, there were zero inspections done on over fifty percent of the houses. I ask you, are we to believe that over 5,000 residents that vote for you, that our homes, our values, and our families are not as important as a bag of ice and a plastic whorehouse? I'm shocked by this. It really is truly a disgrace that transcends race, partisanship, religion, orientation. The backbone of every city, of every community is always, always its people. What are you all really doing for the people? I'm not here seeking employment, not trying to get as many likes as I can get on social media. I'd much rather pass you at the gas station and say hello as opposed to come here to confront you, to do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, let me ask this young lady, could you come back to the, you know, you keep stating that, that this council isn't aware of it or doesn't do anything about it, you know, but we have been on the top of it, and I guess we're looking for ways that we can, you know, help you even more than we already have. I mean, we've had, what, three percent loans? We did certain things that, that we have spent money on. We have put in sewers so that you can take a bad septic tank and hook into. You know, all this, you know, the city did, hoping that people would hook up into the sewer. And I'm very familiar with your situation. My daughter is at Ravine and Nine Mile Road, and she had to pay $18,000 to have a sewer put in, not put in, but to attach to the sewer, and, and they had to get a loan. And it's my daughter. And I guess I'm looking for some help from you and, and other citizens, I think about 1,600 that have septic problems, of how we can help you. And I talked to the administration, I've talked to the state and said, you know, how did you help Flint? And I said, money available to help out these individuals? I don't get any answers from the state or the county. So I guess I'm asking, you know, I know you come up, I know you have a problem, I'd like to resolve that problem, I just don't have the wherewithal to do it. And I don't think anybody up here can make what magic wand and say, everything is fine. What'll happen is that they'll go and do all the houses, they'll check them all out, they'll ticket those who have bad septic tanks and force them to tie in the sewer. Then they'll come back to us and say, you know, it's going to cost $24,000 to hook up to the sewer. Well, I don't know, you expect the city to come up with the $24,000 in 1,600 homes, maybe? Or whatever that number is? I mean, we have a tax dollar here that is given to us by the taxpayers, and we spend it as diligently as we can. And we provided some means to get a loan, a three percent loan. And I guess I'm asking is, how can we, you know, do what we haven't done so far?
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you for calling me back to the podium to address the concern, to ask a question. Second, I'd like to say that I'm a professional. I have a great mind, I've been in my line of business for nearly 27 years. Having three minutes to discuss this problem that's been over lingering for 22 years is not a feasible way to address the residents. I think speaking before today would have been great. Might I add that this ordinance was actually, public record shows that there were issues with this and how the city rolled it out back in 1997. Sir, what I am saying to you is that the city failed to make and require every single home in this city get a septic inspection every three years. Even on your septic one-on-one brochure, on the history, it starts at 1999. You know the next year of action of your septic tank? 2016. That truly is the last time the city did anything about this ordinance, sir.
So are you, pardon me, but are you asking us to have the Board of Health, Oakland County Board of Health, to check every septic in the city? Is that what you're asking?
What I'm saying, sir, is that the, the city's ordinance required that every home in this city with a septic tank was supposed to be inspected every three years. The city or the county, whoever wants to point the finger, did not require or have every single home in this, in this city, sir, with a septic tank inspected.
So in other words, you want the city to inspect all the septics in the city?
In other words, I would like for this council to contact me like a professional, and I can sit down as a leader of my community with the residents of my community and not stand here at the podium to try to address a concern that I've been trying to address here this way for three years. So I am more than willing to open up my calendar to meet with all of you and around So I am more than willing to open up my, my calendar to meet with all of you at a round table with the residents.
Am I asking?
Your question is, do I want the county to contact to, to inspect all the homes?
No, what I'm trying to understand.
They're supposed to.
What happens if we go out and we hire inspectors to go out and get every septic tank that's in the city? And, and if they don't, if they're failing, close them down? Is that what you're asking?
That is not what I'm proposing, sir.
Well, you're saying that every three years.
What I'm saying is, that is the city's ordinance, the city ordinance requires that.
Fine, so, so add a year to that ordinance. We'll hire a group of inspectors that they'll go around and check every septic tank in the city and bring it up to date. In other words, you bring it up to normal today. And then if they are in violation, then we close them down. Is that what you're asking?
That is not what I'm asking, sir.
What are you asking?
What I'm, what I'm trying to understand.
Trying to understand.
Right, I, I get that you're trying to, that you're trying to understand that. My question to you, sir, is how does the city have an ordinance that went into effect in nineteen ninety-eight that it failed to fairly inequitably and equally enforce? So you have homes that, an entire city population that went decades without any enforcement of this ordinance. They were allowed to sell these homes to a now new population of African-Americans and then in twenty sixteen, the city sprang on them this ordinance. What you're asking me to do, sir, and propose, is to say, do I want the city to do their job? Yes, sir, I do.
The city doesn't inspect those septics. The county board of health does. And I don't want to get into back and forth.
You can, you can, sir, you can really read out to me professionally and we can sit down.
Now, give me a minute to talk.
I think we need to call this to order right now. We're not going to get this resolved right.
No, but I just want, I didn't, I guess I'm ready to sit down with you and I'm sure council are. And I'm saying is, forgetting about when the, probably the city did whatever, let's bring it up to date. And if they're supposed to inspect all these homes, that we'll do it. And that's what you're asking? Because you're criticizing the fact that the city didn't have a meeting up in the Parks and Recreation, because I was there, and they were, and the, and the community decided that that's the way they wanted to go. All right? Now, that was maybe the original owner of the house and you probably didn't check with the real estate people, or they didn't tell you that they had a septic.
No, sir.
But anyway, I was more than glad to sit down with you.
I respect your, I, I respect you, sir, too much to bicker this way.
Can we have, can we have, can we end this conversation right now because it's not going to get resolved this way?
Yeah, I'm sure, Madam Chair, I didn't want to get into this because I just tried to figure out, what action are they asking for? Because if it's to do an inspection, you'll do the inspection, get the board, county board of health to do it, and whoever has a bad septic will be ticketed. That's what you're actually hearing here this evening.
Fifty percent of the tanks were bad.
In nineteen ninety-seven.
Thirty years ago. These houses are seventy years old, seventy-plus years old. These inspections should have been done. And you allowed these houses to be sold to black people and the previous homeowners walked away with a fortune. Now you sit here as a man who sat on the board back then. My woman don't know the engineering factors to this, but if you want to talk to a man that knows the engineering factor to this, you talk to me because I can break it down to you. And then you didn't even install the leads, which is more money on the homeowner. Don't you dare sit here, don't you dare sit here and tell poor people, struggling people, black people that we gotta pick up on what you didn't do. I shouldn't have been able to buy my home for two hundred grand just to put another sixty, seventy, eighty grand into it just for a septic tank. What, what happens when I need a furnace? What happens when I need a roof? This was racist.
Order, we're gonna call a reset.
Don't talk about what you don't know.
That's right, let's just go on to the next person.
I'm the next person. I come up here today to talk about heat.
I think you had your three minutes.
Well, no, I didn't.
No, we, we hadn't called him.
I'm not gonna listen.
You're questioning my woman and like, like she knows about engineering. Question me. I'm meeting with, right now, with Michigan State University's engineers.
Please.
Okay, I'm kind of upset.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm gonna tell you.
I will give you your three minutes.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to what I came here to talk about.
This is a professional meeting, we need to keep it that way.
I, I understand that, but he was inappropriate. But I'm gonna come up here and tell you what I came to talk about.
Start the timer, please.
Which is hate. Our organization, All Race and Life Matter, we, we strictly work against things like this, just hate. I've, I've watched an individual come up to this podium who says she's been here for thirty-six years. If I say I like Dan Brightwell, she cusses me out. If I say I like Myron Fraser, she cusses me out. I remember one day she got into it with you and just acted an absolute fool in a meeting, but a few weeks ago, she cussed me out in the lobby like I was her man. I'm sitting here telling you, what we all about is bringing the community together, resolving issues without ignorance, without hate. One of the reasons, would you hand her the purpose letter? Our purpose is all about this. I just left a meeting with the governor explaining these same issues to the governor. We got people from Washington getting involved with this septic tank issue. They can't even understand it. But my whole thing is, I want to fix this community. I love Southfield. Since I've been here, I love this city. And I'm working very hard to bring our community together, to end this hate, stop just one person from thinking that she owns the city. I'm not mentioning nobody's name. But every one of us deserve respect. Not you, Don Bukowski, I do, she do, but when you want to talk about engineering, I'm working right now with some engineers at Michigan State University that say they can come in and install an eco-friendly, cost-effective septic field that the residents wouldn't have to pay no more than ten grand for, not take out financing on their house or sign their house over to the city. I know Lawrence Tech ain't gonna do it, so that's a bust with Lawrence Tech because Lawrence Tech's trying to steal people's properties based on septic tanks. We gotta come together. We kind of, we gotta come together. But if we're gonna talk professional, we gotta bring professional people to the table. She's a software person. I built buildings from the ground up, from the ground up. I've worked for every contractor. I done built everything from Ford Field to every stadium. If you want, I know what I'm talking about when it come down to septic tanks. I'm the man to talk to. I'm the man that will be at the table when we talk about this. This is an issue that should have been resolved years ago, but it was a failure. It was a failure on you old timers' behalf, all of you, even Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence. She failed. She failed us. We can't keep coming here. I got better things. I'm, I'm an art lover. I'd rather be taking pictures of art and, and working on landscape architect. That's what I bought my home for. I hate coming here. I want to work with you guys.
The time is up, sir. Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hard to follow. My name is Harold Hill, uh, council, council president and Mayor Cyver. Got a chance to see your speech today. Very good. A positive note for the city. We all wanted to say that we love our city. I want to echo what Keith Harris said, we love our city. That's why I've been coming to these meetings for probably about five years. And when somebody passes along information to me, I just wanted to pass it along and I want to say thank you for listening those five years. Um, one such issue that was brought up to me was the consent agenda. I've been coming here, getting information firsthand, so I didn't know the impact or importance of the consent agenda reading during the televised portion of this meeting. Uh, it's really important because some people are shut in, some people are handicapped, or they just have time constraints. And they want to know what's going on in our meeting because we make some of the, you guys make some of the hard decisions on how to spend our tax dollars. You make these decisions on whether or not to approve something or not. And it's really important. So I'm just echoing what somebody told me and I think they pass it along to our councilwoman Taylor also. The reading of the consent agenda, and let me explain, um, there's two meetings. The first meeting is a study session meeting where all the hard decisions are made for those people watching, and then they come to the chambers for the televised version. Those decisions have been made such as the six hundred thousand dollars asked for by our deputy city administrator for the correction of, let's say, an issue with the hiring, to return some of their money for the first week of hiring. Very important decision. People want to know that kind of stuff. They want to know information on that sex doll brothel, which was a no, definitely. So they're saying that a couple of months ago, we made a decision to stop reading the consent agenda material. And I'm glad I heard from council that, uh, some other people have mentioned that too. So I'm, my ask is that we start reading that material because people have reached out and said they love their city too and they want to find out what's going on with the government. And that's probably one of the best ways. Comcast has done a fantastic job of getting the information to our people that watch and you would be amazed at how many people watch the broadcast. I have gone to churches on the east side and people say, I saw the council meetings. It's far-reaching. People do want to know. So I'm just passing that along to you and, uh, thank you for listening.
Our next request for recognition is Constance Bill.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel and Mayor.
Good evening.
Constance Bill, 24637 Pembroke Drive. I've been before you a few times regarding Lockmore Homeowners Association. And through FOIA, I received a copy of the site plan that was approved by city council back in, uh, two thousand and three. According to the site, site plan, it stipulates, the petitioner is hereby notified that any change or deviation in the site plan shall again be subject to review and approval. Specific conditions of approval, F, the building elevations represented on sheet number, C, attachment, are incorporated with this approval. And of course, incorporated means something as part of a whole included. Well, when I looked at the site plan, I noticed throughout it said attachment. So I went back through the FOIA, city clerk's office, and I received the attachments, which are elevation plans of our existing homes. My question is, well, I'll go back. On December of the nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, permits were issued to Pembroke Homes LLC per building department approval of new plans and new elevations for 24638 and 24697 Pembroke Drive. These new plans were approved without following the planning commission and city council site protocol. The petitioner, which we are, Lockmore Homeowners Association, are the successor developer, was unaware of these actions involved changes and deviations and could not petition city council. Why did the city of Southfield aid Pembroke Homes LLC in circumventing the process by allowing new plans and elevations without approval of city council and the planning commission? Lockmore HOA Board demands a cease and desist order to be issued to Pembroke Homes LLC and rescind all permits of the properties in question post haste. I want to add by, according to the city charter and ordinance, the city has minimum guidelines to protect our property, to protect our value of our homes, of our existing homes. These permits were issued, again, with deviation plans. These plans were never approved by city council nor, um, the commission, planning commission. And so again, I'm asking for them, the city of Southfield, to cease and desist from Pembroke Homes, the building of the current homes, which they're involved in right now, and to rescind the permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh...
And I have, I wanted to issue, uh, I have this for the mayor, a copy of the plans and also for city council. Thank you.
Um, rec, uh, request for recognition for Diane Anderson.
Good evening. I'm not here representing myself tonight. I'm here representing the Lathrop Village Women's Club. And one of the first things I want to do is dispel the notion that it's actually the Lathrop Village Women's Club. It hasn't been since nineteen ninety-two. It's the Southfield, Oak Park, Detroit, Franklin, Novi, you get the gist. Everybody's women's club. And I'm here because this year is the hundred and fifty-first anniversary of the Women's Club movement and the eightieth anniversary of the Lathrop Village Women's Club, which was started in nineteen thirty-nine. For those of you who don't know, we are about empowering women. Our movement was started back in eighteen sixty-eight when a female journalist was denied entry to a function for the writer Charles Dickens. She didn't get angry, she got even. She founded the Cirrhosis Club, which morphed into the Federation of Women's Club Movement, which was recognized by the U.S. Congress in nineteen oh one. We do a great many things. We raise money for charity. Uh, we have educational programs. April first, for example, we will be hosting a function about planning for your child with disabilities when you're no longer here. I'm here tonight because in celebration of our eightieth anniversary, we're going to be producing a history of the Lathrop Village Women's Club, something along these lines like the city of Lathrop did. And I'm here to ask your support as individuals and as a council for this organization that has done so much to empower women in this area while doing so much for the local community, charitable work, civic work and so forth. I have for each one of you to distribute tonight a little history of the movement, what we are, and your chance to purchase an ad in our book. And all of the profits we make from the book after cost are going to go to our charities. So I know it's running late. Thank you for listening and I'll leave these things to be distributed for all of you. And finally, I am shameless when spooking from my clubs and organizations. Uh, we would be very grateful if you follow the city of Lathrop and pass some sort of a motion at your next meeting in April, perhaps congratulating our organization for its eighty years of achievement in helping the community so that we can include that in the booklet.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, Councilwoman Taylor's asked if we recognize Gregory Keeler, please, if he's still, yep, there we go.
Thank you, Gray Keeler, twenty-one, tw, yeah, twenty, twenty-one seventy, seventy-five Circle Drive. The one with the dorm on it. The dorm that is not connected to a sewer line. The dorm that was put on Circle Drive without a sewer line being put there. Nor was it asked when it was built, would it be put a sewer line there? But it's told to all the residents, you must be connected to the sewer line. Well, that seems kind of hypocritical to me. Seems totally unethical and immoral to tell us, we gotta hook up, but you don't tell a dorm, well, you can get on the street. At the same time they put the dorm on there, they wanted to put a nursing school over there. But the only problem with the nursing school was it fell in the middle of my backyard. And when they brought the drawings up here, council was ready to pass it until I picked up the drawings and said, this is in the middle of my backyard. It's not within the fifteen, um, feet limit that it was supposed to be away from my yard. It was in my yard. Now I look at, the value of property should be going up. It shouldn't be sitting still because people will not want to buy a home that has a septic tank. So the value of my home is going down. So when I went to the accessory office to have my taxes adjusted properly to the value going down, he told me I needed to come here. I had to look at him and pause for a couple of minutes. I'm like, really? You didn't spoke to a couple of other people on Circle Drive before me and you chose me to say this to? I said, obviously, you don't even look at what goes on in council if you're telling me to come here and speak about it. And you don't know that I've been bringing this issue up for twenty years. And that's totally ridiculous. Septic tank one-on-one, it says you have two options of hooking up. I don't. I do not have a sewer line to hook into. There is nothing there. First time y'all wrote up that thing, you said you couldn't do your own septic field, you couldn't rebuild it. Then you had to go back and rewrite it. So the person who wrote this thing about the septic tanks and putting in the sewer lines, he was a genius. Because so far, y'all have not been able to correct this mess, even with the town hall, that there is still a mess about this and people are still angry at the fact that they bought this property. Now, how do I pass on my property to my grandchildren? Now, how do I pass on my property to my grandchildren? One of the things they talked about was developing of the land. One of the things I've talked about to Ken Cyver is developing my land. I cannot develop my land because I'm sitting on a septic tank. If there was a sewer line there, I could build, do other things, do other things. I do not have to sit there and wait for a predator to try to buy my house at $10,000, $30,000. That is totally ridiculous, somebody would pay 200...
Time is up.
Or invest in the house. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to the council portion of the meeting. Council members? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I have just a, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, um, through the chair to the City Administrator, is there any way we could refer the Lockmore situation back to planning and have them review that? Since there's additional exhibits or something, attachments or whatever, to make sure that they were all looked at before? I mean, we can't make that decision here, but planning...
I, I, and planning handled that, not the administration, but I think the city attorney's been involved in that?
Uh, through the chair, yes, I have been involved with this. Um, and my office has, has, um, worked with, there was a FOIA production, and, um, so we have been looking at this. Um, and I, I could report to you, um, after the meeting what we've done with the Lockmore Division.
And you have the attachments that was mentioned? Because my understanding from what I heard is that the attachments wasn't a part of the first, um, piece of information?
That, that I'm not sure of, but I, I have seen the attachments in the planning department.
Okay.
And it's my understanding, I believe that, um, Ms. Bell has them at this point.
Okay. And again, through the chair, since we're all talking to the, uh, attorney, could you also give us an update on the Sapphire at some point as well? I know they were in court, the Sapphire, um...
Yes, they were.
Apartments?
Yes.
And, uh, I didn't hear what the outcome or, or any of that was. So when you get an opportunity, could you also update us on that?
Certainly.
Okay. And then lastly, I just wanted to read something to you that I found to be very, very interesting. And for, like me, for those of us who were not aware, our very own 46th District Judge, Deborah Nance, has a weekly radio show called Your Best Chance with Judge Nance, which runs every Saturday on 9:10 a.m., from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This show was designed to provide you your best chance to access information regarding justice and better ways to understand the criminal justice system, the court processes, and those who serve there. Judges cannot give you information, but she provides outlet for you to ask questions for a spongemint, or what to do if you get tickets, I mean, or any kind of question that you have. And this is done free, every Saturday, for you to get your questions answered. She provides lawyers, she has lawyers there on the, uh, talk show to answer questions because judges are not allowed to do that. But it's an avenue that a lot of people can take advantage of rather than spending your money going to a lawyer's office. If you have a simple question, maybe on your home, maybe on a deed, maybe on some paperwork that you have at your, uh, in your home, and you're not clear on it, and you just want a little bit more information, take advantage of this opportunity to have, uh, professionals, uh, at your fingertips to talk to you about it. So again, I encourage everyone to listen and call in and get your questions answered for free regarding legal matters that you may have questions about. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Morris.
Yes, just a few things. Um, to the City Administrator, at the last meeting, I believe it was, um, we talked about possibly doing a cost analysis with regards to Mr. Keeler's request. Uh, do you know when we might have that completed?
We actually do have that analysis, but I, it's an item that we've scheduled for the April 1st study session.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. We'll be looking forward to that. And then, um, I just wanted to say congratulations to the Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team. They won their Division D State Championship title over this past weekend. Uh, Councilman Frikazi and I went to the game, and a very exciting time, basketball. Anybody that knows me, basketball is very important in my household. So I just want to, uh, give a shout out to my two nephews, Jonathan Sanders, he's a graduating senior, and Malcolm King, he's a sophomore. Uh, they helped their team achieve victory. So shout out, Southfield Christian.
Let me, let me add to that, if I may. We have another great group, um, that will be, uh, playing basketball. We have the Women's Group at Southfield A&amp;T, and they'll be at West Bloomfield tomorrow evening. And then after they win tomorrow, they'll be going for the States. And we're going to probably have two basketball teams in the City of Southfield for the first time in the history.
Wow.
Call it into existence, right?
There you go.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to let everyone know that, uh, Southfield Lathir Crop Hunger Walk is coming up. It will take place on Sunday, April 14th. Uh, 25% of those donations for the walk benefit the Human Services Emergency Food Program, Meals on Wheels, and Forgotten Harvest. If you are interested in, um, volunteering, attending, or just donating, again, it's the Southfield Lathir Crop Hunger Walk, and it will take place Sunday, April 14th. You can contact Rhonda Terry in our Human Services Department at 248-796-4542. Um, also, um, we have a dedicated line for pothole complaints. I know that, uh, as the snow finally goes away and spring comes up, the potholes continue. Um, 796-4000 is a 24-hour recorded line that is checked daily because I've called. They will respond to your pothole complaint as quickly as they can. Uh, specific addresses or intersections are preferred, so they know where to look. Um, I did speak with them today. They are a little behind because there are, um, the rain. They can't do anything in the rain, but they are trying to get there as quickly as they can. So please be patient and just drive a little more carefully, uh, through the streets. Also, with spring coming up, a, um, a resident approached me this weekend, and it was a first-time winner of our, um, beautification award. And they said that they're starting to plan their garden, uh, so they hope they can win again this year. Uh, it's nice hearing that from a first-time winner who's already thinking of different things. They're like, now, now I know that they're going to be looking at my home, and they, they're starting to plan. So another thing to keep in mind, as spring, uh, gets closer, uh, please keep that in mind to, to get your home ready. And if you find a nice home, you can take a picture and submit it for our photo prize. That's coming up. Um, the deadline to submit any photos from, from the last calendar year is May 10th. Um, it can be, you can work, live, do something in Southfield, you can submit your photo. Last year, we had over 100 applicants. Um, the deadline, again, for the Southfield Photo Prize is May 10th. And you can submit your photos through email to photocontest@cityofsouthfield.com, or you can call 796-5130 for more information. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Frikazi?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, recognize our mayor. They had, uh, he did a beautiful job. He did the State of the City this afternoon. Um, he's going to have you probably say it himself, but Thursday, they're going to, you're going to do it for the public with a luncheon. He did a beautiful job, one of the greatest jobs I've ever seen, um, technically and artly and every other way, but it was a beautiful kind of presentation. And I hope that somebody who tells, from here, tells everybody to try to make it because it's worth its while.
Any other council members?
I just want to say one thing real briefly. Um, this evening, I heard a lot of people come to this, to the lectern here and talk about how much they love Southfield. What I saw when I came back in the room today is absolutely unacceptable. If we're going to be a great Southfield, we're going to be, we got to work together. We can't be divisive and working apart. So all this shouting and badgering my colleagues up here, it's not going to continue. You will be removed from this place if that happens again, whomever it might be. So I just want that to be on record, to let people know that's not the Southfield that we are. That's it. Mr. Mayor?
Um, I'd, I'd like to tell, um, Mr. Keeler, uh, he's still here, I believe.
He's still here.
Uh, we, um, I have approached Lawrence Tech, um, and we have a meeting that was waiting for the City Administrator to return, um, from his sick leave, um, where, um, we will be taking the issue up with Lawrence Tech. Um, I can't predict the outcome, but, uh, I did approach the CFO of the university to, uh, revisit Circle Drive's lack of sewer. Uh, since Lawrence Tech is the principal property owner on, uh, Circle Drive, uh, it's only right that, uh, they are involved. Uh, on other, um, uh, issues, I, um, I appreciate, um, Councilman Mandelbaum's, um, talk of spring. Uh, it is coming. Um, uh, and, uh, so this is a little bit different beat, but, um, with spring comes severe weather. Uh, we've seen some tornadoes recently. And so, uh, once again, Southfield will be hosting a skywarn class. Uh, this is, uh, the, the classes are free, um, or the class is free. It lasts 1.5 hours. And what skywarn is, is an effort to save lives during severe weather emergencies by expanding networks of spotters and by encouraging the widest possible participation in, uh, tornado warning programs. There is no, obviously, way to stop a tornado, um, and not all tornadoes show up on radar, but they can, uh, be seen and lives can be saved. Only one instrument can detect a tornado or funnel with complete certainty, and that is, uh, the human eye. So there is a skywarning class, um, that will be held Monday, next Monday, March 25th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Southfield Public Library. Uh, it is free. Anybody that would like to, uh, join our emergency management team, uh, is involved in, or am preparing this, uh, team, is involved in this, uh, effort. Um, and I, I'll repeat this again next week, but, um, uh, as you know, this time of year, we start the, um, first Saturday of the month, tornado warnings at 1:00. Well, we will have, um, uh, that's always on a Saturday. Uh, tornadoes, uh, can come at any time. So we, um, uh, will once again have the countywide, uh, warning system activated at 1:00 p.m. on March 27th. That's a Wednesday. This is, um, a time where businesses, um, can do a tornado drill, schools. Um, and, uh, we encourage, um, uh, people to, uh, know what to do, um, in the, in the event of a tornado. Hopefully, uh, that will not happen here, but it's always best to be prepared. Um, and finally, um, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Frikazi, for, uh, your kind words. Uh, the State of the City was presented to 320 people today, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. It was a ticketed event. Uh, however, uh, we will be repeating it Thursday night in this room at 7:00 p.m. Uh, and will, uh, include the State of the City, as well as, um, we will have the Engineering Department's, um, PowerPoint that was shared with council a couple of weeks ago on roadwork for, uh, the 2019, uh, season, uh, construction season. So, uh, uh, you're all invited to attend, um, and, uh, we'll have a reception in the lobby following, uh, the State of the City. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, do we have anything for the administration?
No, sir. Thank you.
Anything from our attorney?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
All right. Anything from the clerk's office?
No, sir.
All right. Treasurer, is our treasurer here tonight? Planner, assessor, engineer, doesn't seem that way. Nothing is scheduled, no ordinance. So that's it. Meeting adjourned.